Good afternoon. Appreciate you all coming. I apologize for having to change the time. It's all my fault. I had real job stuff to do, so I'd like to call this meeting to order of the special called work session, June eighth, twenty twenty one, at three thirty. First item on the agenda today will be Kevin Culligan, our city engineer, downtown traffic. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Kevin Culligan. I'm a city engineer, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you today about downtown traffic on Second Street. I'd like to start out with just a little background, a little history on how we got to where we are today. In February two thousand nine, there was a Owensboro Downtown Master Plan Report that was done by Gateway Planning Group. They involved multiple stakeholders. They had like the We the People meetings, the City Commission meetings, a lot of public input. And one of the initiatives of the master plan report was to reinvent Second Street. Some of the things that they proposed to reinvent Second Street was to construct the curb extensions, the bump outs that you see today, in effort to create traffic calming. Basically make it more pedestrian friendly. They also originally proposed to make it two-way traffic, and they had a goal of establishing a, of creating a motor speed of twenty mile per hour. So following the, the master plan, a traffic engineer was consulted to try and figure out how to implement some of those changes. And that was, Intran did that study. Like I said, originally, they had proposed converting Second Street to two-way traffic. They used some, some traffic simulation modeling to predict motor speeds, and, and in doing that, they predicted that they could get that goal of, of around twenty mile per hour by, by doing the, the traffic calming measures like the curb bump outs and, and the additional signalization. And then so that, that was, the decision that was made was to leave it one way and implement these other changes and, and still meet that goal with a, a cost savings. And, and the, the speed limit on Second Street was reduced to twenty-five mile per hour. So we get to where we are today. Those streetscape improvements, those, those changes to Second Street, they've been in place since around the end of twenty thirteen, early twenty fourteen. And we're hearing concerns from some of the people downtown. Some of those concerns include speed of vehicles. Some people say, well, it's not really the speed, it's the noise. Some people want the street closed. Some people don't. And so, um, one thing I, you know, I try to ask myself when, is what is the problem? And, and what are we trying to fix? My department, the engineering department, we, we took some of these concerns and we started doing some evaluation. Uh, one thing we do is we look at crash history. We looked at crash history on Second Street from Davis to Frederica. It's our understanding that's the main area of concern that where the cafe seating is. We reviewed the last five years. That, that's just, that's a standard. Usually you do at least the last three. We went the last five. There's been one vehicular pedestrian collision. That was a case where a driver was turning left off of Allen and did not yield to a pedestrian. In our review, we, we find that most accidents are rear end and side swipe collisions, not necessarily a factor of speed, but more so of driver inattention. You know, there's a lot of activity downtown that might contribute to some of the driver inattention. There's been two incidences of vehicles running up over the curb. One of those was in twenty, twenty sixteen. That was a, a hit and run incident occurred at night. And the other one was just a couple of weekends ago where we had the motors drive up over the curb where they're at Colby's, and to my understanding, that, that driver ran the red light. Something else we do is we did a speed study. You know, we, we heard the complaints about people are speeding. The way that we do a speed study is we get with the police department, and we set up in an unmarked vehicle, or if we're in a marked vehicle, we, we set up in a position where the motors cannot see us. And we take a radar gun and we, we shoot what we call free flow speed. And what I mean by that is we capture vehicles that are driving at a free flowing speed. They're not impacted by coming to a stop at a traffic signal. They're not accelerating from a stop condition. They're not platooned up in behind other vehicles. And we did that at several locations on Second Street, and we did it twenty nineteen and in twenty twenty-one. The area between Allen and St. Anne in twenty nineteen, the eighty-fifth percentile speed was twenty-six point four mile per hour. And just in May of this year, it was twenty-two point six mile per hour. And we've recently, the police department has increased enforcement in that area. That might be a reflection of that. The eighty-fifth percentile speed, what that means is eighty-five percent of the motors drive that speed or slower. So it's not eighty-five percent of vehicles drive that speed. It's eighty-five percent drive that speed or slower. That's correct. And so that's, that's a standard that is used by, you know, other agencies like the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. They usually use that to set speed limits on streets. So that's, that's how we gather, police department, they have a camera that, that gathers speed data. It gathers everything, though. It picks up vehicles that are coming to stop, turning, and so it collects an average speed, and the average speed is much lower. So like I said, the speed limit is twenty-five. In our review, we're, we're not seeing a consistent problem with, with people speeding. Not denying that some vehicles do speed, but for the most part, it appears to be functioning as designed. Other part of, of our evaluation was review of the signal coordination. And you don't have to worry about focusing on that, that graph thing there, but that's, that graph is the, is the, the signal timing for Second Street. Most of you probably notice, if you get stopped at a light, like at Davis Street, and the light turns green, if you progress much faster than twenty-five mile per hour, you will have to tap your brakes before you get to the next intersection. And so those, those signals fall in progression, they're timed, and the slope of that line is, is set at twenty-five mile per hour. And it's very simple. It's distance over time. That's mile per hour. There's two, two different cycles, or two different cycles. There's a nighttime cycle, which is a sixty-second cycle length, so that's sixty seconds of, that includes green time, yellow time, red time, and then in the day, it's seventy-five seconds. It's a little longer because traffic volumes are higher. With this, with the signals timed this way, it, of course, it maintains a smooth traffic flow. It also helps to control speed to some degree. Now, of course, if you come in on the tail end of a green cycle, you can just sail right down through there, you know. So it, it can't fix everything, but it does help, help control that and also maintain a, a smooth traffic flow. And usually when you have smooth traffic flow, you, you minimize your, your accidents. In our review, those signals are functioning as designed. We, we reviewed some of the options that we've heard mentioned by the public. We've heard speed bumps. My department, we, we do not recommend speed bumps on, on any city street. Speed bumps are not recognized by the MUTCD. The MUTCD is the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. That is the standard that is used by the Federal Highway Administration and the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, and is also adopted by ordinance, by the city. That's the standard for traffic control devices. And since they are not recognized by the MUTCD in our judgment, they're not in compliance with the MUTCD. There is such a thing as a speed hump or speed table. That is a much lower profile, much wider. There is one at, at the KWC campus. That's the only one I know of in town. They're typically designed as a, as I would, I would consider as like a last final measure there for local streets. Second Street is a minor ulterior street, much higher traffic volumes. Some of the reasons that, that we don't recommend implementation of, of speed bumps is there's potential for loss of control of vehicle. So they're an obstacle in the street that's trying to physically slow a vehicle down. So if someone doesn't recognize it and they come through too fast, they lose control. Their issue with snow plowing, Second Street is a priority one snow route. During event closures on Second Street, I mean, is that something that we want in the middle of the street for pedestrians to walk over, step over? Potential for increased noise. Usually drivers, if you have multiple ones of those, they speed up in between. And, um, something else, consideration for emergency vehicles, you know, if you have an ambulance, a fire truck, uh, you know, if you have somebody's trying to put in an IV in the back of an ambulance and they're hitting speed bumps, or you, you got a fire truck and it's delaying reaction time. So we don't recommend those. Something else we've heard is removal of the signals, changing it to an always stop or complete signal desynchronization where you get stopped at every intersection. My concern with that would be you could have more rear end collisions. I mean, as you heard me state earlier, that's, that might exacerbate one of the problems there, you know, if, if that's a problem. It can create more rear end collisions. If you lose the signals, you lose that designated pedestrian crossing phase. So if you go to always stop, you lose that, that designated pedestrian crossing phase where a platoon of pedestrians can cross at once. And they have to look to see if, you know, if you have two vehicles arrive at the intersection, they're looking at each other to see who got there first and maybe not paying attention to the pedestrian. If you make them stop at every intersection, likely encourages driver disobedience. You know, you get driver frustration. They're trying to get through there. They, you know, they might try to beat the light. They might do rolling stop. Like, people may start to avoid downtown. Could create a lot of congestion. It's like, Second Street gets about ten thousand vehicles a day. It's a lot of volume. And could increase to more pollution. You know, you got the people setting out on the patios and you got cars stopping at every block. You may get more noise, more pollution as people accelerate from each intersection. Something that, that we haven't really heard from the public, but could be considered, would be to shift the cafe seating. You know, there's pros and cons with either way. Currently, the cafe seating is positioned closer to the street curb. It could be shifted to the building side and the pedestrian access route be between that cafe seating and the planters. That puts additional buffer between the, the seated folks. You know, it might be somewhat a perception issue. The closer yard of the traffic, the faster it seems like it's going. Of course, that, you know, that would have to be worked at, worked through with the, the business owners. Some of them have somewhat permanent items constructed and, and, but could be considered. We've also heard discussion of lowering the speed limit. So it's currently twenty-five mile per hour. In our review, for the most part, people are complying with that. So what, what speed is acceptable to downtown? You know, is, is twenty too fast? Is fifteen too fast? Um, you know, if, if you're several feet from a traveling vehicle, fifteen might be too fast. But at some point, the, you get the, the travel speed so slow, then, then we have to ask ourselves, what, what speed will be respected by motorists? And, and what I mean by that is people usually drive to the speed that they're comfortable with. And, and so with, with the bump outs and the narrow lanes and the, and the, the congestion, people are, are, it's functioning by design and people are driving close to that twenty-five. I don't know that people are going to travel fifteen without constant enforcement. So we, we can, we can make the law. Someone has to enforce it. And, you know, if fifteen is, is really slow, it, it can be done. Uh, you know, you might just try driving at fifteen sometime, you know, make sure there's not someone in behind you, don't cause a wreck, but just try driving at fifteen and, and tell me what you, you know, what you think. And then, you know, I just like to try and consider the user groups of Second Street. Of course, we have the downtown businesses, merchants. We have pedestrians. We have bicyclists. We have motorists. They are a user group, and, and all those make up the public. And, and so, you know, I would recommend that we try to balance competing interests. And, you know, that, that's, that's the end of my presentation. I, I guess at this point, I, my thought was just to try and open up some discussion and questions and, and see, you know, after this, if you thought there still was a problem and, you know, exactly what that problem was, and, and then I could come up with some potential solutions for fixing that.
Thank you. Kevin, so we have it blocked now on Friday after five from, I don't know, what it's five.
Midnight on Friday nights.
What does that do to your traffic down there? Is, did, was that ever a consideration in all these reiterations of what you've been doing the last fifteen years, nineteen years, whatever it is?
Are you referring to closing the street off for Friday after five?
Yes, like we're doing now.
Yeah, so not specifically considered in anything that I've found, but just, you know, from what I've heard, like doing it this past week, it's, we close Second Street, you know, all the time. We can do that. Like I said, you do get a lot of volume. So, you know, it's my understanding there's, there's a lot of congestion at Davis and Second.
Last weekend was a terrible weekend to do it, too, with the, with the concert.
Yeah, people turn and thinking, you know, I'll turn right and go down Veterans, and then it's closed.
Couldn't tell which way he's washing or hanging out half the time.
Yeah, so, so we might try to, you know, set up a message board and advance a triplet, pick them up there and, and do some things like that to disperse that traffic. But, but yeah, you, you see that, you know, there is a, a significant amount of vehicles that use that, and, and just, um, just shutting it down does impact the transportation network, you know.
Thank you, Mayor. Kevin, thanks for putting all the data together. I know it's a lot of work. So is the suggestion that we just leave it alone? Everything's okay, or?
So.
It's called spotlight on Kevin.
Yeah, so. Well, I, I don't see that, that people are really speeding. You know, I, I understand that some people do, but the data does not, not show that people are, are speeding. Um, you know, we, we could work through some, if, if speed was a concern, we could work through some, some signal timing and, and bring that progression down a little closer to twenty. You know, now you're, you're looking at kind of capturing vehicles between the twenty, twenty-five instead of the twenty-five to thirty. I, I don't know if that's enough to satisfy downtown, you know, but.
It's not like we, you're just making this stuff up. You've been working on this, we've been working on this as a community for a long time, correct?
Sure is.
Yeah, and you've spent a lot, we've spent a lot of money on the curbs and all that kind of stuff and planters and, and things like that. So it's, it's, it's an interesting quandary. Commissioner Glenn, do you have something you want to say?
So the data you have for May twenty twenty-one where you showed the miles per hour going down, does that involve any of the enforcement that OPD's been doing in the last twenty days or so, or was this data calculated prior to the?
That was post enforcement.
So this is, that shows an effect of them putting the traffic carts up?
Possibly. I mean, you, you know, we, we could count every day and get a little variation, right? But it, it could be a result of that.
I'm guarantee it is, because that's an effective way to solve it. One thing I didn't hear you talk about that I think is important, having been down there quite a bit in the last month. We've got a lot of people that drive motorcycles and also ATVs, and one of them took out a planter the night I was down there. And while I don't want to discriminate against people who drive motorcycles, one of the complaints I hear is this noise is deafening. I mean, they're, they're not just driving their motorcycle. They're making sure everybody knows they own a motorcycle, and it's real loud. Do we have any noise ordinances that could be enforceable in that sense? Because to me, I'm sitting here eating a meal, that's probably more distracting than anything else. I can't conduct conversation. I mean, everybody can hear.
City manager? Well, I, I think Kevin's doing what I was gonna do. We do have a noise ordinance. That's an enforcement issue, and so Chief Fieldman's here, and I think Officer Contrado, I think, actually participated in some of the speed studies. Aaron and I graduated together, so if not in a long time, he's a good dude.
A good dude, you want to speak?
So, so like I say, they, they could probably speak to that. Of course, I also want to mention Tim Ross is here. Tim works with the, the business owners downtown regularly for event closures, and so he hears some feedback. So if you have questions for Tim and the feedback he hears, that may be relevant as well.
Okay. Officer? All right. Aaron Contrado, Owensboro Police Department Traffic Unit. Yes, by direction of the chief, I've been spending quite a bit of time on directed enforcement downtown. And I agree with what Kevin says. Is there an issue that can, that potential? Yes, there is. However, we have done numerous studies post the direction of what we're supposed to have. Chief's had me down there numerous times. We said we have a covert box. We also have our radar trailers. And we try to position those in different locations, trying to find basically traffic patterns. And basically what we found throughout the last few years, even during COVID, they had me down there at five AM due to the Jaeger workers cutting across from five to six, making traffic stops. So it's a continuous cycle going anywhere from Locust all the way back to around Critman. And the average speeds are acceptable based on the data that we've pulled. Now, as far as the ordinance that you brought up on noise, is there a problem with the motorcycles? Potentially, yes, because they do. Nobody, like I was talking to Major Winkler today about it. He asked me, I'm not a motorcycle guy. I think they're neat, but I don't have one. Most people, as soon as they get a motorcycle, first thing they do is they take the factory installed muffler off, and like Kevin said, they want to show off their motorcycle and, hey, just look at me. Based on the directed enforcement that we've had down there, looking for instances that we could stop people for in violation of that ordinance, from my understanding, there was one stop. That's because I made it. And it wasn't for a motorcycle. It was actually for bass, like music. Guy had too much of music. However, I will tell you that the biggest time that we were directed down there was when there were street closures. They were having to go around that. So the motorcycles weren't hitting that area. So the biggest issue is motorcycles. That I know of, like bigger cities, we haven't had an ATV problem cruising through there, four-wheelers, things like that, unlicensed vehicles. We haven't had that problem. It's primarily the motorcycles. Extremely rare to have a car come through there with a loud muffler every now and then. You will see like your dual exhaust type systems. But if you want to talk about percentages, it's a very low percentage of a problem. So like I said, there's no telling. I, I know the chief has the, the probably a running data of how many stops we've made in the last, like sixty days. And I think we only have one for a noise, and that was because I made it. And that was like noon in the afternoon, and that was for bass only. So, did I answer your question?
Yes, I, I think so. And I want to thank you for all your effort in enforcing and, and working with us to make these adjustments. I've got one other question, if that's okay, Mayor, and then I'll, the other question is probably a Tim Ross question, and that is, do we have any feedback or data on aesthetics? Because I must say, last weekend, with Lee Greenwood being here and the cruise in, it was a real busy week. But I'll tell you, I, my wife and I really liked walking across that street knowing we weren't going to get hit by a car. We really liked the fact the street was closed. From an aesthetic perspective as just a citizen, I liked it. But I don't know what kind of feedback you're getting, Tim.
Yes, sir. Tim Ross, Public Events with the city. I've talked to a handful of businesses that are in that section of road that we closed on Friday night, because obviously they're the ones that are impacted the most, you know, that are open up during those evening hours. And for the most part, they were all appreciative of the effort to do it. You know, it was only one week. We've done it for two, but the first week, weather kind of negated the crowd that's normally down there. So this last week, the weather was great, and, you know, they were appreciative of the effort, but they recognized it's been one week, so we'll kind of see how it goes. But they were still busy, and it was a less hectic environment. Just as Kevin said, and that Aaron was kind of insinuating, too, is that some of the noise issues is when there's a larger event and there's more people, that's when people tend to want to show off more and let people know that they're there. So that's probably a bigger issue when there's an event going on like Friday after five. That might not happen as much during the middle of the day, you know, during a lunch crowd type thing. The restaurants I talked to across the board said, we realize, none of us are really hoping that we close the road all the time. We know that's not realistic. There's not enough volume down there to, to even, you know, consider that. But they appreciate the baby steps that are being taken to kind of address the issue to a certain extent. And so, you know, they've suggested what Kevin had talked about as a potential is flip flopping the seating closer to the building, that maybe that's another good perception standpoint, that you feel like when you're sitting there, as Kevin said, if I'm sitting, you know, two feet from the road compared to eight feet from the road, different perception of that noise and the speed. So again, they're, they're thankful for the efforts that are being made, but they also realistically aren't demanding that we close the roads all the time either. You know, they want to be realistic with it, with, with the volume, but yet when it is bigger like a Friday after five season, it's helpful for them.
Thank you, Tim.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Tim, I was just, I was curious as to if it's ever been considered, I, I'll say Tim, I meant Kevin, has it ever been considered to?
a running data of how many stops we've made in the last, like, sixty days, um, and I think we only have one for a noise, and that was because I made it, and that was, like, noon in the afternoon, and that was for bass only, so, did I answer your question?
Yes, I, I think so, and I want to thank you for all your effort in enforcing and, and working with us to make these adjustments. Um, I've got one other question, if that's okay, Mayor, and then I'll, uh, the other question is probably a Tim Ross question, and that is, do we have any feedback or data on aesthetics? Because I must say, last weekend, with Lee Greenwood being here and, uh, the cruise in, it was a real busy week, but I'll tell you, I, my wife and I really liked walking across that street knowing we weren't going to get hit by a car. We really liked the fact the street was closed, everyone aesthetic perspective as just a citizen, I liked it, but I don't know what kind of feedback you're getting, Tim.
Yes, sir. Tim Ross, Public Events with the city. Um, I've talked to a handful of businesses that are in that section of road that we closed on Friday night, because obviously, they're the ones that are impacted the most, you know, that are open up during those evening hours, and for the most part, they were all appreciative of the effort to do it, you know, it was only one week, we've done it for two, but the first week weather kind of negated the crowd that's normally down there, so, uh, this last week, the weather was great, and, you know, they were appreciative of the effort, but they recognized it's been one week, so we'll kind of see how it goes, but they were still busy, and it was, um, a less hectic environment. Um, just as Kevin, um, said, and that Aaron was kind of insinuating to, is that some of the noise issues is when there's a larger event and there's more people, that's when people tend to want to show off more and let people know that they're there, so that's probably a bigger issue when there's an event going on like Friday After Five, that might not happen as much during the middle of the day, you know, during a lunch crowd type thing. Uh, the restaurants I talked to across the board said, we realize, none of us are really hoping that we close the road all the time, we know that's not realistic, um, there's not enough volume down there to, to even, you know, consider that, but they appreciate the baby steps that are being taken to kind of address the issue to a certain extent, and so, um, you know, they've suggested what Kevin had talked about as a potential, is flip-flopping the seating closer to the building, that maybe that's another good perception standpoint, that you feel like when you're sitting there, as Kevin said, if I'm sitting, you know, two feet from the road compared to eight feet from the road, different perception of that noise and the speed. So, um, again, they're, they're thankful for the efforts that are being made, but they also realistically aren't demanding that we close the roads all the time either, you know, they want to be realistic with it, with, with the volume, but yet, when it is bigger like a Friday After Five season, um, it's helpful for them.
Thank you, Tim.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Tim, I was just, uh, I was curious as to if, uh, it's ever been considered, uh, I, I'll say Tim, I, I meant Kevin, has it ever been considered to, uh, stagger one of the lights, like, the third light, uh, as far as through the progression of downtown, to have one of those, it's just kind of offset to go ahead and, you know, slow traffic down some, instead of, you know, having the whole, uh, all stop, as you say?
Yeah. Yeah, we have, uh, considered that, um, you know, it's, uh...
Has it ever been tried?
It, to my knowledge, it has not been tried, no. Um, you know, do, do you do it at, um, at St. Anne, or, or do you do it at Frederica Street? You know, if, if you do it at St. Anne, that's where you're going to slow them down? Does it make it more noisy for the people eating there? I don't know. Um, that, that would definitely be more tasteful than every intersection, you know?
I know you wouldn't want to do the all stops, that probably causes road rage and...
Yeah.
You know, chief, or, you know, with our shortage of police officers, is that the best use of our men and women in blue, be down there writing citations for, I know you'll do anything we ask you to do, but just logically, could they be used in a better place, somewhere in town?
We have more significant issues in this city than to be concerned with people driving thirty in a twenty-five.
I agree.
To answer your question, yes.
That's what I'm getting at.
But, that is part of our function in public safety, so, if that's an issue, we do what we can to deter speeders, loud music, loud mufflers, whatever, but, uh, we are shorthanded, we're twenty-four people down at this time.
That's a good question.
All right, thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. Uh, Kevin? Has anybody ever considered a serpentine?
Um, what do you mean?
I'm guessing, like, a chicaner, what do you call a chicaner? Or, like a, like, we, yeah.
And I put barrels up and let them go in and out of it like that?
Oh.
There's your call, chicaner, I believe, were you?
I mean, I've had at least a half a dozen people ask me that, and I'm saying, well, I don't know, I'm not an engineer, but that's an interesting scenario, so, I just think they run over the barrels and get up on the curb, and you know, and, I don't know, I just, I was asked to ask that, I'm asking.
I have not considered that, no. Um, I mean, I, I guess, if, if you would like to see some action taken, my recommendation would be to try and bring the progression down slightly with the signals, and, and see if that improves the, um, you know, the experience of, of the downtown people, and, and, you know, bring it down closer to twenty.
But don't post a fifteen?
No, I'll probably leave...
Would you post no motorcycles?
No, I don't think I can do that. Yeah.
I think that's probably, maybe a legal question, I don't know that we can restrict a licensed vehicle by type, we have to do some research on that, we'll look into it.
Counsel?
I'll take a look at it.
I mean, you know, just, those seem like simple, but nothing's simple, ever simple, it seems like, um, was there ever any discussion just turning it into a walkway? Second Street? Eliminate all vehicles?
Not in, not in my position, not, not since I've been there, no.
Okay. Good, I don't want, so, well, thanks for confusing us to an nth degree, as engineers generally do. We're trying to figure out something, um, that's, uh, as palpable as possible.
Sure.
And your suggestion, possibly, do we, we have to, we have to, we have to have a discussion, and the bad thing about it, we can only talk to one at a time when we do that, and Commissioner Sanford's out of town, so, uh, we appreciate your presentation, and it's a well thought out, and it gives us some food for thought.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Briefly, if we have two business owners here, i- if you could give us a, a brief synopsis of your issues, Stephen, and, uh, is all, or do you, did you hear enough today?
Um, I heard something.
You can't talk unless you go to the mic, sorry, and you love talking, so, uh, you get up there and you have to tell your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Lisa All, I own Little Bit Sassy, I live in Philpott, so, we're country people, so I don't understand all the city fighting. Um, my first question is, we are downtown, what group is that? That group officially dissolved three years ago, correct?
No, no, you're downtown, you tell us.
Right, so, I think it's Debbie Ford that was the president, and Rosemary Condor was the vice president, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, that they kept the Facebook, although the board was dissolved, so I don't want anybody to be confused and think that we are downtown represents everybody, because it does not, that's no longer a board. And the way I understood, Kevin, there's not a traffic issue, seems like it's a restaurant issue, they need more space, and am I going to touch on those little flower pots again in the, the, the bench? If those flower pots and benches were put in the right spots, like they were set out by the city, maybe we wouldn't have this problem. I understand because of coronavirus, COVID, whatever, that they were allowed to encroach on more property than what was theirs, but it was never intended for Jack Wales Building to have restaurant, like, food out there, so, that motorcycle that hit it, if that restaurant was really concerned, they just shut their business down right then, and said, okay, go home, this is dangerous, or, maybe they would have lifted that flower pot barrier up before they started business.
In front of Mike Kleese, it's, it's being recorded, okay?
Right, so maybe if they'd have lifted that flower pot barrier up before they started their business again Saturday, they would feel safer.
Well, that's a what-if.
Yes, well, there was a lot of what-ifs, like Kevin said, what if, if we trigger this, people are going to have road rage, that's what if, so, so my question is, let's make sure we know there is not a we are downtown officially.
Okay.
It's a couple of women.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Steve?
Steve Jarvis, three oh seven, Lynx Cove. You know, when we shut this street down, and I, I see arts here, I'm glad he is, you know, they put the sign up the day before, like, it's going to be shut down on Friday, they put the no parking on Thursday, infants on Saturday, put it up on Friday. I have seen multi-times people pull into those parking spaces, see that sign the day before, and drive off, because the signs are small, and they, all they're seeing is just temporary tag, and they think that's for that very day, which is actually the day before, so, you know, if you're saying you're shutting it down for Friday night, you're actually shutting it down for Thursday, because people are losing customers down there, because this shutting the street down, every time you want to turn around, you, you know, we, we have a lot of out-of-town customers that come to Owensboro, which is great, but we can't get them confused, is if, if they're going to be able to park reasonably closed and do their shopping or eating, versus parking a block or so away to come over. You know, if we look back in history, that's what happened to downtowns, everybody wanted to run out to the mall with the illusion that you could park at the front door, which you really couldn't, you know, but they thought that anyway, but we can't go back down this road again, you know, and, I, I'm, I'm just strictly against even closing it down for anything down there, really.
I believe I understand.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay. We're going to move on to item number three, American Rescue Plan, which I thought that would draw a crowd. Uh, Ms. Waniger, Director of Finance and Support Services.
Hey, Mayor. Uh, so today, um, we're going to talk about the American Rescue Plan. Um, due to the negative economic and public health effects of what we know as the COVID-19 pandemic, the Treasury issued what we, uh, know of as the interim final rule, to implement the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds established under the American Rescue Plan Act, which is also referred to as ARP or ARPA, so if you hear that acronym, that's what they're, that's referring to. I'm going to present an overview of the American Rescue Plan Act to you today. Section nine nine oh one of the ARPA amends Title Six of the Social Security Act by adding Sections six oh two and six oh three. Section six oh three is the section that establishes a fund for cities and counties, it is sublabeled the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, or the CLFRF. You might also hear the acronym CSLFRF used in conversation, which just includes the state in there as well as the local. So what I'm trying to do is just let you be aware of all the acronyms and different terminologies that are discussed out there, so they all kind of mean the same thing. All right, the American Rescue Act was signed into law on March eleventh, two thousand twenty-one by President Biden. It's a hundred and fifty-one pages of information and preliminary guidance on how the funds may be used, and I say preliminary because of the name interim final rule, so change is, is subject to change. So due to the urgency to get the funding out, that's why we have the interim final rule, keyword interim, meaning that some guidance and information is available in the hundred and fifty-one pages. The final guidance and information will be released at a later date. The Treasury is currently seeking comment on, uh, the interim final rule. In fact, in order to induce or facilitate comments, the Treasury has inserted questions throughout the interim final rule for agencies' consideration. All comments are due to the Treasury but July sixteen, twenty twenty-one. To further educate and facilitate the public comment, the Treasury has also released an FAQ, or Frequently Asked Questions, report, as well as a fact sheet to aid in developing comments and feedback. It is unknown when the final rule will be released. Due to the possibility of revised guidelines, it is difficult to solidify a plan for appropriations. Of the finance directors and treasurers that I have spoken to or spoken with, all are waiting for the final rule to formally appropriate funds for use. If anyone wants more information, you can also go to the website of the Kentucky Eligus Cities or Government Finance Officers Association. So the next slide is just a brief overview of the dollars that are flowing down. The American Rescue Act is a total of one point nine trillion dollars. Of that, a hundred and ninety-five billion is allocated to the states, two point one eight three billion is coming to the state of Kentucky, and thirteen point three million to the city of Owensboro. The payments will be distributed in two tranches, the first, in May of twenty twenty-one, we have received our first tranche, the second, in May of twenty twenty-two. This round of assistance will differ from the previous coronavirus relief CARES funding, in that the CARES funding was structured as a reimbursement grant, meaning that the eligible expenses had to be incurred and paid for to be reimbursed. This round of funding, the ARPA, makes the funds available beforehand with the requirement to spend on or reimburse for items occurring March of twenty twenty-one and later. It also requires periodic reporting from the entity as to how the funds were used, and it's also subject to audit. The next slide outlines the four categories, uh, for eligible uses of the funds. The first is public health, emergency, and economic impacts. The second is for premium pay for essential workers, third is revenue loss, which is the funds that may be used for certain government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue due to the COVID-19, and lastly, for investments in infrastructure. We will cover each of these in more detail in the following slides. Note, the expenditures are for the period March third, two thousand twenty-one, or later through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, so the expenditures are forward-looking, whereas the CARES funding was previous-looking. Also note that the funds can be expended through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. So note, there's a difference there between twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-six. The Treasury takes the current position that as long as the expenditure was incurred or obligated by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, we can still do the cash outlay through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, and be within their guidelines, and I say that with the exception of premium pay, that may be applied retroactively. There are more categories and options in the public health and economic impacts category than all the other categories combined. This category takes thirty-five of the sixty-eight pages of guidance on eligible uses. Part of those uses, um, and, and bear with me, because I'm summarizing thirty-five pages down to three bullet points, so it's, it's a very high-level presentation. It will address the impacts of the COVID-19 public health emergency, including assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits, and aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. Another category that bears mention is public health, for containing mitigating COVID-19, behavioral healthcare needs, payroll benefits, for public health, public safety, human services, and that's to the extent that those personnel actually worked on COVID-19 response. And then there's the negative, um, uh, economic impact, the impacted industries, tourism, travel, hospitality, rebuilding your public sector capacity, small business support, and your hardest-hit communities. Our next slide is dedicated to premium pay for essential workers. So what is an essential worker? They are identified as those who have been and continue to be relied on to maintain continuity, continuity of operations. This would include, um, but it's not an all-inclusive list, but it just includes staff at nursing homes and hospitals, workers at farms, food factories, grocery stores and restaurants, janitors and sanitation workers, truck drivers, truck here workers, and school staff, essentially anyone who continued to work in the public through this pandemic. The third category covers, uh, revenue loss by government entities. This revenue loss is calculated using two thousand nineteen actual revenue as a base year measurement, and that would be the fiscal year. This represents the last full fiscal year prior to the pandemic. Then we have the projected calendar year's revenue loss for the calendar years ended twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. That re- lost revenue is based on the higher of the previous three-year historical average or four point one percent, and the Treasury will allow us to use the higher rate. If actuals in those years are lower than the projected based on these calculations, then you have a revenue loss. If a revenue loss was experienced, the ARPA funds may be used to provide for government services up to the amount of that revenue loss. So I thought a picture might be helpful, helpful in following the revenue loss methodology, it's kind of small, but I think, I think we can see it hopefully well enough. Um, this graph is actually included within the hundred and fifty-one page legislation, and it reflects what we call counterfactual revenue, which is the total of actual, actual revenue per calendar year, plus the reduction in revenue as calculated with that formula provided by the Treasury. This particular figure shows the reduced revenue declining over time. So what you'll see on the left-hand side, the white bar is your base year for the fiscal year ended June of two thousand nineteen, and as we progress out, that black bar is your actual revenues, the gray bar is what is calculated as your lost revenues based on that formula that the Treasury provides.
Angela?
Yes, sir.
Why is June nineteenth and rest of them December? I know it's probably a dumb question.
Yeah, that, that's, uh, actually, it's not a dumb question at all, it, it, it has caused a lot of confusion out and about in, in the accounting community, but, um, because cities, uh, operate on a fiscal year, and that's an audited year.
Oh, okay.
And so, they are allowing us to use the fiscal year, but then, the formula takes into consideration from June of two thousand nineteen, and then the next six months, so that, that formula has an exponent factor in it, it's, it's kind of a, it's, it can, it's a difficult formula.
See, I thought it was because some, you know, some of them are on calendar year, and some of them are on fiscal year in June, some of them are on fiscal year in September.
Yeah, well, in the federal government, their fiscal year starts in October, ends in September, and so, and, and like our TIFs, they, they operate on a calendar year, and our state operates on the same fiscal year we do, but the TIFs are on a calendar year.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and so, I, I guess it's just a cleaner, maybe... And so I guess it's just a cleaner maybe measurement of, of time. And so, but the, the calculation that the government has provided takes that fiscal year revenue data and converts it to a calendar year, and then it works on forward. But that's a very good question there. So our next slide is just a real brief overview of eligible uses and uses that we, or things we cannot use the ARPA funds on. Eligible uses can be used on government services such as directly providing services or aid to citizens. The ARPA Act is very in tune with hard-hit communities, low income, very sensitive to those areas, maintenance of infrastructure spending, including roads, modernization of cybersecurity. There's a lot of guidelines, current cyber, just, you have to prove that it's done for due to COVID. Environmental remediation, police, fire, and other public safety services. Items that the ARPA funds cannot be used on, principal or interest of debt service, reserves or rainy day funds, or non-federal match for other federal programs. And this is our last slide. The investments in infrastructure, this is the last of the four categories refers, actually, to guidelines already established in other legislation. So the water, just to make things simple, this ARP legislation refers you to the drinking water state revolving fund guidelines. If what you, what a city wants to do for a water project, look to the guidelines in the drinking water state revolving fund. If it's covered there, then chances are it's covered and eligible for ARPA. With the sewer, it's kind of the same mindset. If those, those projects, if they align with those eligible for the clean water revolving fund, then the ARP is eligible to spend ARP funds on. The broadband, there's a lot of guidelines here. There's minimums. I believe it's like twenty-five MBPs down and three up. Has to be that low. And then at the end of this project, the project should deliver a hundred MBPSs up and down. So there's a lot of restrictions with the broadband. It's not as loosely used as what you might think. And the broadband, they really want to see this invested in unserved or underserved areas. So that concludes my presentation. Like I said, it represents a very, very high level, very condensed overview of the Act. It boils a hundred and fifty-one pages, first a hundred and fifty-one pages, down to nine slides of, of information. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
When looking at those blurbs that I get from, you know, Washington, I don't think I ever saw anything that said you could not combine your efforts with another government. Did you see any of that in there?
I believe that you're correct in that there's no prohibition of doing that. And it seems like I remember reading somewhere or hearing that a county in, in a city could, could join efforts.
Join efforts for a project, and that would qualify. We'd have a lot of hoops to jump through, but at the same time, it doesn't, there's no prohibition that you couldn't consider that option.
There's no prohibition, correct, that I'm aware of. It seems like, in fact, I have heard that example given.
And the other, so does that project a, a city partnering with a county that is not in that county seat? It's not like we would partner with Henderson County or something, or Vandenberg County. Is there any, I couldn't, haven't been able to see any.
Yeah, I don't recall reading anything to that effect. That might be a good question or comment to.
I sent that up to Sophie up in Brett's office just to see.
Yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a good question. Let me know what you.
The regional effect of economic development doesn't just end at our borders. That's why I was, you know, kind of curious about it, if there were projects that Henderson or Vandenberg, you know, could, you know, work together with.
Yeah, it, it, it seems to me that logically, if they're going to allow, for example, the city of Owensboro to partner up with fiscal court, that if you could justify that it was due to COVID, and it's going to help repair, reparation from COVID, logically, it seems like it would be allowed.
You can't apply logic to the government. Remember that.
But that is a good question, and I'll also look into that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So one question I've got, the Shuttered Venues Act says that places like River Park Center and the Bluegrass Museum can apply for funds. Is that part of ARPA, or is that separate from?
No, it's separate.
Okay. So it's separate, okay.
I'm sorry.
Well, having, having said that, that's fine. Can they still apply, or could we apply any of these funds to fill any shortfalls that shuttered venues funding does?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not familiar with the shuttered venues information that you're sharing. But I, for anyone that thinks that they may fit in some of these categories, would there be no reason for them to apply? Now, having said that, until the final rules come out, I would caution to, to appropriate anything, you know, because there's categories that cover tourism, hospitality, all the way down to households. And so, who knows what may or may not change as a result of comments and questions and so forth. So if someone had a situation where they had reduced revenues or increased expenditures because of COVID, no reason they shouldn't apply. That's my opinion.
I mean, we supplement a lot of groups, I mean, the convention center, the, you know, his, the art museum, history museum, and I'm wondering, you know, what, if they're eligible into this, this autumn money.
If I could have commented, I just wouldn't encourage any of them to land-based our finance department with those questions. Let them do a little research on their own, kind of figure, figure it out, because we got enough to say grace over trying to figure it out ourselves. And I think if all of a sudden every nonprofit in Orangeboro decides, call Angela, I mean, Ms. Wanniger, I think it's counterproductive to the process, is my say.
Well, and I even agree. I think if the Shuttered Venues Act is separate from that, that's where they should go.
Right, exactly.
Instead of to us. So I totally agree with you. The other question I've got is, go ahead.
No, no, I thought you were finished. I'm sorry.
I've got two more pay-based questions. So public works, you said, bus drivers, over-the-road drivers, our public works department, basically. I'm looking at Stephen over here. We've provided, tried to improve some incentivization and pay for those workers, because we're having trouble hiring them. In addition to that funding, are we allowed to use some of that money to basically try to improve our retention for bus drivers?
You refer to the premium pay section? Yes. And, you know, I.
But I thought I heard you say that.
Right, right, right. And I, now that you ask, I think there might have been, yeah, some additional information that I didn't cover that was on the slide, that, yes, up to thirteen dollars per hour in addition to their current wages, not to exceed twenty-five thousand per worker. And so, as long as they fit into the essential worker protocol, and that was a quite lengthy list, you know, that I covered, and it wasn't even all-inclusive from what's in, in, in the legislation, that, yes, that, that certainly fits within the parameter of that.
Keeping in mind, these are interim rules. Treasury hadn't said this is what you're going to go by. It's an interim, just because everybody was pounding them, trying to get the information out, and Treasury put interim rules in place so they could go back and fix, you know, like the first CARES Act that came out, there was all kinds of abuse, you know, you had the Los Angeles Lakers getting money. So that's, they learned that from the first CARES Act, so it's an interim basis right now.
So everything's pretty much conceptual right now, you know, but it's good to be thinking about these different categories, you know, and, and conceptually thinking how we might want to spend those funds, but not appropriating anything until the final rule comes out.
So you have the final version rules, okay. And then the last question is people who are in dangerous occupations, like our firefighters and the police officers, would they also fall under the river of essential workers, where you could supplement their pay? Because I know one of the issues we had was overtime in the fire department. We spent a lot of money on overtime because they got hit by COVID real bad, and they had a lot of people who had been on shifts.
Yeah, yes. My understanding of, of the literature would be that yes to your question.
Thank you there, and thank you, Ms. Wanniger.
You're welcome.
Excellent presentation.
Thank you, thank you. It's hard to make stuff, stuff like this very exciting in a presentation.
Anytime somebody gives me thirteen point three million dollars, gives our commission thirteen point three million dollars.
Certainly, yeah, 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 I agree.
It's like watching wet paint dry, as far as I'm concerned. Anything else from the diet? Mary Nunn, thank you. Item four on the agenda, fireworks. Battalion Chief, Mr. Steve Leonard, front center. Lay them out, Stephen. Got some of that stuff on your waist you can't get out of. Free money is just hard to deal with. It's, it truly is. Somewhere along the line, somebody's going to have to pay this stuff back.
Yes, sir.
All right. Steve Leonard, Battalion Chief, Fire Marshal, Owensboro Fire Department. Chief hired asked me to give you guys a small briefing, and I'll keep it small and quick, on the fireworks ordinance, the laws pertaining to that, state fireworks ordinance, and so forth and so on. Gets a little confusing for a lot of folks, because we really deal with it on a large scale only once a year. There's several other times that we deal with it on a smaller scale, New Year's, that type of thing, Memorial Day, but, but this time of year, we really talk about the fireworks. And us, including the citizens, oftentimes really don't know where they stand as far as the laws are concerned and what's, what's required. So I've broken this down into three areas, and, and after I'm finished, you can ask any question you like, and I'll try to, try as best I can to answer those for you. First of all, our public display of fireworks, that's the big fireworks that we see every year. The city uses those, some of the other entities around the community. They're for public display, that's for the crowds to go to and watch, and, and we've done fantastic with that. We only typically have three or four of those types of issues or types of events each year. You notice probably ten or twenty more, if you look at an aerial view of the city, on the Fourth of July night, there's probably ten or twenty more large-scale fireworks events that occur in folks' backyards and parks and areas like that. Those are not permitted. The folks that are permitted, the, the bonded and licensed shooters that come in here professionally, they're no problem whatsoever. We don't have a problem with those. They know what they're doing, they're good at what they do. The liabilities fall squarely on them, so they're, they're aware of that, and they're aware of the laws and the safety concerns and so forth. The concern is, is the folks who do display those large diameter fireworks throughout the community, and, and not understanding the distance requirements, and I'll go into those in just a little bit. So that's the first group of people that we deal with. The second thing I'll talk about is, is who can sell fireworks and how does that work in our community? First of all, there are the seasonal folks that come in and sell fireworks for us through the community, and, and that runs between seven and fifteen entities every year that come in and sell their fireworks out of tents. We're familiar with those on shopping center parking lots and so forth. So what, what's required of those first folks? First of all, they have to have a city business license, they have to be, have that liability insurance, they have to be permitted through the state fire marshal's office, as well as OMPC for the location of where they're going to set their tents up and so forth, as well as the fire department permitting those folks. So we inspect their, their, their seasonal facilities. They are able to sell their fireworks from the tenth of June till the seventh of July. So they can sell them for that period of time. Now, you'll notice in a minute, they can't, you can't discharge fireworks for all of that period of time, but that's what they can sell those for. What we do at the fire department, once we, once they set those tents up, we inspect those, we do an inventory of their fireworks, and not getting too in-depth in that, the egress, the types of fire extinguishers they need, the no smoking signs, the fact that nobody there under eighteen years of age can sell fireworks, and by the way, nobody legally under the age of eighteen is to discharge fireworks in the city. I know that we see a lot more than that. So we look at those, we look at the amount of fireworks they have. They can only have up to five hundred and forty pounds of actual charge or powder fireworks. They may have much more in, in that weight, as far as the paper, the boxes, that type of thing, but we have to look at how much fireworks they have, and the type of fireworks. What's commonly known as common Class C fireworks has changed a little bit through the years. Used to in the Commonwealth of Kentucky, basically anything that exploded or flew through the air was illegal in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Now, we all know what people did. They went to Indiana and Tennessee, and they bought those and brought them back, so it didn't stop that from happening. So the laws changed to where that those types of things are used, and then the larger types of fireworks are used for the public display. Permanent people that sell year-round, there's like three in the community, they're charged three thousand dollars for that permit, and the six hundred dollars each year for a renewal. There has to be a freestanding facility, they have to meet all the requirements of the seasonal folks. I mentioned freestanding, a lot of folks really get upset with us when they ask, can I put my fireworks facility in a strip mall, for example? Well, there's no separation there, so if we have an incident there, it involves a lot of other people very quickly. So, so they have to be freestanding, they have to have three means of egress, and again, all the requirements for that. Now, laws as far as discharging fireworks, and this is the thing that I think most people get confused on, hopefully that clears this up. Fireworks may be discharged from ten AM till midnight on December thirty-first through January first for New Year's, and then ten AM to midnight July third, July fourth, and on Memorial Day. Under law, no other time. If someone sets fireworks off in May in the city of Owensboro, they're, they're breaking the law. Anyone under eighteen years of age, as I mentioned earlier, cannot discharge fireworks. So, you know, and, and probably we've seen many people under that age using fireworks and so forth. That's against the law. This is the big one. No person shall discharge fireworks within two hundred feet of any structure, motor vehicle, or other person. It's difficult to find a backyard in this community where you have two hundred feet of clear distance from, from any structure, any car, truck, or any person. So all of these requirements have to be met by people who professionally do this for our public displays. We go down, that's why the, the barge wound up out in the middle of the river. We did not have that four hundred-foot distance when we were, when we used to do that at English Park. We had some blowback and some debris falling down, and it wasn't safe, so we moved that out. So if you look at some of the other, I won't name any one, but look at other places in the community, they make sure they have that distance, and we work with them to make sure they have that distance. So it's impossible for the average family to have that kind of distance in their home or backyard, or on the sidewalk or streets, but again, we see that each year. Very quickly, questions?
Go ahead, Commissioner Kastner.
Is there an age limit as far as who can purchase the fireworks? Is that twenty-one or over?
Short time, aren't you? Another question a lot of people have, what happens to someone if they, if they're in violation and charged? It can be as little as fifty-dollar fine, up to a thousand dollars, and up to thirty days in jail, depending on the offense. The bigger concern from my perspective is the liability for you and your concern. I wouldn't want to be that person who caught someone's home on fire, injured someone, or caused the death of someone as a result of those fireworks. Fortunately, it's not huge in our community, it's not a huge issue across the country, but we hear about that each and every year. So about thirty-eight percent of the injuries that occur, hand injuries, about fourteen percent of eye injuries, and the others are remaining whatever. But the interesting part of this is, most of those injuries occur eighteen years of age or younger.
Battalion Chief, your expertise in this is remarkable. My question is, what could we do better? We can't enforce these laws. I mean, it's impossible. I mean, you might get lucky and catch a few of them. I mean, my neighborhood shoots them off in all hours, all the time, but what could we do? Could we charge these people that come in and set up these temporary things? Would we make it financially impossible for them to make a profit when they come in? I mean, is there anything we can do to make it easier on law enforcement and our fire department?
I think if those people were, were to leave our community, the retail sellers and so forth, I think that our citizens would just buy them somewhere else.
Okay. We are getting some revenue.
Yeah, that, that, yeah, that occurred before they changed the laws in the state of Kentucky. So they, and Kentucky realized that, so they changed the laws. We might as well get that money from that as anyone else. I think the misconception is the fire service is opposed to fireworks, and I've said this for years, we're not opposed to the use of fireworks, we're opposed to the misuse of fireworks. So to answer your question in that respect, PSAs, articles, the paper each year puts out a, a large article every year. Awareness and prevention is the key to this type of thing, making sure people are aware, trying to educate them to the point that this is, that, that they are safer than they used to be. We see that more than we used to. Twenty years ago, when I first started being involved in the fireworks regulations as city fire marshal, the numbers were way up. The ER saw a lot of people on the Fourth of July. That number's down quite a bit. I, I'm reluctant to say that, sure as you do, you have those numbers go up. So I think we're, I think we're making, making some points, I think we're making some headway out there, but that seems to be our only tool, because you're exactly right, Mayor. There's no way the, the police agency or the fire agency can, can regulate that and, and police everyone, because again, on the. because again, on the Fourth of July, basically, everyone buys their fireworks, so it's difficult. So that PSA, that public education goes a long way.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So we have one business that is sort of odd, I won't mention them because I'm not out to attack them, I just have a question. It appears that they sell fireworks, it's in their name, but then a part of the year they sell another product, and then all of a sudden, they're selling fireworks like right now. My question is, you've said they really don't belong in a strip mall, but that particular business of a major thoroughfare, if you get my drift, appears to be in a strip mall. There appear to be other businesses, you know, headed north from them. So I'm wondering, did they get exempted? I mean, I just, it's sort of an odd, and they may be a fine company, I don't, that's what I'm.
Right, I'm very familiar with who you're talking about. They own the entire complex. It was designed to be a strip mall, there is no division in that. Originally was, it's not, they own the entire facility, they sell one product through the year, and then during fireworks, they meet all the requirements, they own that, and it's freestanding. There's, if you'll notice, it's not connected to the, there's a separation between that, that, I don't know, 100 by 50-foot building and the ones next to that. So that's how, they're not breaking any laws, any rules, they.
I'm not saying they are, but they stand out because they're all year. You see the sign, and it's like, okay, they're not like a tent, they put them up.
The concern with the strip malls or even downtown district, for example, where you have connected buildings, is again, if you have an issue or a fire, it involves a lot of other people very, very quickly.
That'll explode. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. Item on, next item on the agenda, city project list, city manager Nate Pagan.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone, and it's good to see you again. The project list was in your pocket as it is most months. I would point out just some updates on the Northwest in RSA that are on page two. As you know, the Northwest Initiative applications went available, went live at the beginning of May, so we have 31 applications for funding so far. That would involve 193,000 of our funds, or the city and state or federal funds, 328,000 in private investment, for a total investment already of $521,000. So that's a pretty good, pretty good response for the first five or five and a half weeks of the program. Beyond that, staff's happy to answer any questions you have.
I had a question last time we had, I was asking, you know, Ben Hall's maintenance building, I don't remember what it said in the book. Could we start having the cost? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, you didn't.
That's okay, I just, when I, and I wouldn't even have thought of it had I not seen what Abby put together, but, you know, somebody calls and say, well, we see you doing concrete streets, you know, so that way it'd be nice for me as an elected official to kind of get some idea of, you know, what these city project lists, because it's important to each one of these folks and.
It's in there for one or two, but we'll add the budgeted amount for the projects, sure.
That'd be helpful, thank you. Yes, sir?
What's our timeframe? I see some of these are already done, great work, there you go, public works into you. Milling, what's our timeframe between the point at which you mill or strip the street before you repay? What's our normal average time? Because I just had, saw that 26th Street, and it didn't seem like there was too long a lag between the milling and the stripping and that.
Yeah, we try to hold that to two weeks, as best we can, yes. So typically, they mill it, and then we have to have, get the manhole castings adjusted appropriately, and then they pave, but try to hold it to about two weeks.
Because you, I bet you get some calls, you know, people driving on that mill, taking a little rough. But it doesn't seem to be very long, that's why. Thank you, sir.
Kevin, how long for y'all start cutting holes in the brand-new asphalt, is what I want to know?
We try to wait at least 30 days.
30 days, okay, thank you. It seems like every time we get a road paved, I'm looking at her cutting squares out of that bling thing. Okay, anything else, city manager?
Yes, sir.
All right. If no one disagrees, we'll adjourn by acclamation. We are adjourned.